Making home improvements doesn't have to be complicated. At West Tennessee Bank, we have the money you need to make the upgrades you want. Come talk with our experienced loan officers and tell us how much you need. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Leonard member FDIC.
Is the board present? Should we proceed with our meeting? Or do I have a motion approved to be agenda which includes Ms. Claire and Ms. Kim? Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say that it is approved to be agenda. All the papers say aye. I propose that it is approved. And the first thing on our agenda will be our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a motion, the second from the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye. I propose that it is approved. The next thing up here is going to be delegations. In trouble, which you are in, delegations.
Okay. For your knowledge, Board, Ms. Scarlett Teague and her husband Michael are here today to ask requests to...I'm gonna let you explain it, but they've got a request that they'd like to make mention to you guys. They've gone through the process with the school, staff, the administration at the junior high, and have appealed to me also, but they'd like to make that appeal also known to you. So Scarlett, Michael.
We come a frank note.
Sure, well, you're talking to them, so where do you feel like you'd be best?
All right. One of each of those just has those written, that'll help her to explain some things that we'll be talking about. But I'll just share with everyone what we submitted to Mr. Kilzer as the narrative for tonight's delegation. We are respectfully asking the Board of Education for our daughter's immediate restatement on the 2019-2020 CCJHS cheer team, for which she was cut for no other reason than Ms. Ellen Brown wanted to reduce the number of cheerleaders from 18 down to 12 for this season. Rather than simply take fewer new girls at this year's tryout, Ms. Brown allowed a panel of outside judges to cut both first-time candidates and current cheerleaders for her. Not only was our daughter the only returning cheerleader to be cut, she will be the only CCJHS or CCHS cheerleader in Chester County's history to ever be cut from a cheer team she was already a part of the previous year unless the Board overturns this decision. Furthermore, Ms. Brown's returning tryout policy has never been implemented by any prior CCJHS cheer coach and is in direct defiance to the precedent set by Mr. Kilzer in 2000 at the high school level when this same policy was attempted by Ms. Diane Stewart. At that time, this policy was rightfully challenged by cheer parents who found themselves in the same position we are in today, which resulted in Mr. Kilzer mandating that no returning cheerleaders at CCHS would be required to try out once they had made the team their first year. We are simply asking the Board for the same reinstatement Mr. Kilzer and Ms. Stewart awarded that child and her family then. In addition to our own child being reinstated, as has been done in the past in this same situation, we ask that this arbitrary returning tryout policy be permanently eliminated from the CCJHS cheer contract as this type of team cut is unnecessary for a non-competitive sport insensitive to the cheer athletes we coach and inconsiderate to their parents' significant financial investment that allows them to participate in this program. One of the sheets I have given you is the cost breakdown Ms. Brown shares with us at the parent meeting. She does let parents know, hey, this is what you're getting into financially. This one is a little bit cheaper. Again, she was sizing down her squad, so this amount is a little bit less than what we paid last year, but you can see that that's a pretty significant investment for a family to make. For that investment, we got 10 football games and cheer camp for one year. Again, at the high school level, I explained to my families and I explained to my girls and my guys, you are a part of this unless you cut yourself. You make some decision that means you are no longer able to be here behaviorally. So again, I tell them that if we're expecting such a substantial financial commitment, that's our commitment to you. You're a part of this. You're a part of us for the duration. That has always been the practice at the high school, as far back as I can trace it. That has always been the practice at the junior high. So again, I know we had first met with Ms. Brown and Dr. Anderson. They had shared with me. Again, I have shared with Mr. Johnson the details of that meeting. The Board has my response to Mr. Kilzer's response to the delegation here. Are there any questions you guys have for us? Yes, sir.
Who picked the judges?
Who picked the judges? She...Ms. Brown had asked me for some recommendations, but I don't know who the judges were. I will say this, I'm here first and foremost as a parent on behalf of my child, but I'm also here as someone who has coached cheer at the high school level for 10 years. And I sit on my panel. I'm one of three judges. We're in a small town. I don't want it ever to be said that I pick people because I know them or I'm related to them or anything like that, so I want it to seem and be as fair and balanced as possible. She allows four outside judges to come in, see about a minute's worth of performance. Those four outside people pick her team for her. I do not do that. I'm one of three judges. I have a role and a say in who picks my team. We have a lot of coaches in this room. Who picks your teams? Anyone? Any sport, who picks the team?
I've got another question for you.
Yes.
Did you give any names for some judges?
Yes, I did.
Were they on the judging?
I do not know.
Okay.
I guess if we do a process with outside judges, I mean, when these stick by it, I mean, or don't have a process at all.
Well, was this a policy change?
This was a policy. I believe she changed it last year. It didn't affect anyone last year. All the returning girls made it back. That's the reason you had no delegation last year about this same thing.
Out of the present, any policy change? It'll be approved with both?
This is not a board policy.
It's not a board.
It's just a practice. It's just a practice, not a policy.
And she conducted the same type trial last year?
Yes. But again, my concern is, as someone who shares her same job at the high school level, and I hope you guys can understand how this will affect us all. If parents are required that significant financial commitment, Mr. Kilzer in 2000, litigation was threatened because people had paid such a substantial amount that, again, for only one year, that's a pretty big deal. It's not like, you know, my daughter plays volleyball. It's not like we're out the price of kneepads and a couple of volleyballs. I mean, we're out upwards of $1,000. So again, for any kind of financial commitment like that, I can definitely foresee that being a problem, not just for me if I instituted that practice, but for Dr. Patlett, that would become a problem, parents contacting him, Board members, you know, they're gonna contact you in that situation. So I'm trying to keep us all out of the news, out of social media, so this isn't an issue for any of us.
But this is not a practice that was changed just this year?
It was changed last year when she came on.
Well, I want to throw out, I did do some research, and there has been other cheerleaders that didn't make it. They had made it. I know one, I have old caller name, I can give it to him. I can check with her. Oh, she made it freshman year and sophomore year, and then junior year didn't make it.
Okay.
As I said, I don't you think that your child is the first and only one that's ever had it?
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying it makes it make you feel any better, but it has happened in the past.
Is Ms. Brown here?
She is. Yes, sir.
Did you communicate very well with the parents? Did they all understand? Well, since it was implemented last year, had ever one you...
Yes, sir. I have a meeting prior to our very first practice during tryout week with the parents, and I go over 100% of the cost, 100% of the way the judges will score. I...there's not even a name on the tryout list. It's just numbers. And those judges, when they score, then I take those top 12 numbers and I put them on a list. And then at that time, I take that number and I associate it with the name, and that's so I don't even know what the names are. But I go over it, and the parents actually have a sheet that they sign saying that they do understand this process, they respect the...they know that the judges are qualified, and they respect the decision of the judges. And then the cheerleader also signs that before we even attempt to start our practice on tryout week. We signed that the judges are qualified, yes. But again, not having a role in picking her own team is something that Mr. Kilzer shared with us that he told her needed to change next year. He said she needs to have a role in picking her own team. So that is something that, again, has been addressed with her.
And I can speak on my behalf. I did have that conversation with Ellen.
It's been done, and it's done the way it was explained it was gonna be done, so I may not make a motion to support the decision of Ms. Brown.
I hate that your daughter didn't make it, but there's other daughters who did make it also.
I understand. And I guess our argument is, it's one thing not to make a team, it's a very different thing to be cut from a team you've been a part of and that your families have such a significant investment in. That's the difference here.
Coaches, once a player makes a team, is that player automatically on the team the next year?
No. It wasn't when I was in school.
That wasn't when I was in school.
But what's the cost of your score per participant?
That's a real...
But if you wanna...
If you've got...well, the one issue I would have with it is, what about the upcoming kids who are coming into the new grade? Once you've got 20 very talented, just as deserving to be on there, they're automatically not considered because so many spots are granted to them.
Well, and I know in my practice, I'm not gonna cut out my existing kids. I'm not gonna tell Jordan Kilzer, you've been a great kid the last two years, but you're not good enough now. I'm not gonna...I may make my squad bigger. I may expand the size of my squad, but I'm...
I hope not, taking more cheerleaders and our football players.
But again, I just, if she wants to cut down her squad, there's a way to do that without cutting out people who have trusted you and been a part of your program. And this is a non-competitive sport. We're not, you know, out here winning games, and we don't have that pressure from that side, but...
We have a motion to say that we go ahead and support the 12 that are on there now. We're not adding anybody. Any other discussions? All the papers say aye? Aye. I propose that it be well maintained.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next celebration. A couple of differences somewhere I'm sure.
At last month's meeting, Heather and Ms. Amy Eads shared the work that they have been doing with coordinating school health and also with Family Resource Center. We had looked at some of the pictures of the new equipment that are included in this Pittin Sports Plex area. And after that event, Ms. Heather asked for the...those members of that, what I'm trying to get the name, the Student Health Council for the high school to come and share some of the initiatives that they have been participating in this year. So I'm gonna set up the stage with the PowerPoint.
So we were here, Amy and I were here last month, and the idea, we tried to get our timing right so that we could share some of the successes of our program along with the successes of the students, the Student Health Council. And we had hoped to be able to share a great celebration, but I was not okay to release the information we wanted to share just then. And I keep looking at Shane because he knows what I'm talking about. I was told a secret a month ago and told not to tell anybody, and it, y'all know I cannot keep secrets. I cannot be quiet about it. But I did, and I'm very proud of myself. I did not even tell David Showers after riding all the way to Marcusboro with him. He tried really hard to get it out of me. But the Student Health Council, once a student becomes a member of the Student Health Council, they are also entered in as a member of what's called SAD, and it stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions. SAD is a national organization, and we have students all across from California to New York to Florida, everywhere. And once you're a member of SAD, there are certain leadership opportunities that are provided to these students if they so choose to put themselves out there. And of course, Presley Connor and David Showers jumped right in on that. Lots of competition, of course, it being a national organization, but last month, I was told, and now it is okay to share, I'm assuming. I hope, because I put it out on social media. Presley Connor has been named as the College Advisory Council President for the National SAD Organization. She's not even here.
But she's in Disney, so don't feel sorry for her.
So that's why we postponed their little celebration till tonight, and thank you for letting them be here. A couple of things I wanna share before I step into...I gotta be Presley since she's visiting. It's up. But from me and Amy, as I guess you would call it sponsors of this council, this is a student-led council. So students attend the camp, they come back, they share goals and needs from the aspect of a student as to what is needed at the high school or what they feel their community needs. Recently, they were asked to participate in a regional, I guess like a poll from the Tennessee Department of Health, and I wanted to give y'all a couple of the answers that they gave because they made me really happy. Couple of them made me happy. One of the things they were asked was, what are the top three concerns? From a student's aspect, their viewpoint, what are your top greatest concerns? And the top three were dueling, distracted driving, and littering. Would not have thought they would said littering, but it's nice to know that at least they notice it's there. They may not pick it up, but they know it's there. When they asked what are Chester County's greatest assets, they said pre Hardiman, Chickasaw State Park, our overall parks, the barbecue festival, and our school system. I did not ask them these questions, by the way. The lady from the Department of Health did that. And when asked what the biggest barriers were to problems in our community, they said money and apathy, which I thought was a very smart and interesting answer from high school students. So I thought that might be interesting for y'all to know how the students view those things. Now I'm gonna kick off the official presentation. I'm gonna do my best to do Presley Connor here, and I don't...that's very tiny, yet big shoes to fill. So just a very quick picture of what Student Health Council looks like. The Student Health Council, everything they do, like I said, is student-led. Everything they're gonna talk to you about are ideas they have come up with, or they are things that they've done because of their programs, like school nutrition may have said, hey, talk to your kids about, you know, pushing this idea or whatever. But regardless of what they do, everything has to come back to one or more of these five areas. And we tell them all the time to be good and balanced, to be a good community member and overall good person, you really need to have a good balance of five areas of fitness. And we explain to them this way, think of a car. A car has four wheels, and those wheels need to be balanced in order to run right, in order to not tear up your car, not to get out of whack. But you also need a steering wheel, so you need a direction for your car to go, otherwise you're just rolling around aimlessly. So the four wheels are your physical, mental, social, and emotional health. Everything they do needs to come from one of those four or their steering wheel, and their steering wheel is the spiritual health. It's the morality. It's to do good, and it's to do good for others. So when you put all these things together, whatever initiative, outreach, program, skit, whatever they're doing, it should do good, not for themselves individually, but for the overall good of others. So that kind of paints the picture of where the Student Health Council gets some of their ideas, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and I'm just gonna step right on back, and y'all make this right. I can do that, yes. If you'd like me to, but you wanna stand back. Okay.
My name's Savannah Newman. I'm a senior, and I've been a part of Student Health Council for almost five years. Some of the things we've done is take what you need, and we got post-it notes and put it in our hallways and put kind words on it so they can just take one, read it, and then pet a puppy. You see a picture up there. It was during test day week, and we would go to the library and get a puppy, try not to be a stress, relax, pet it. And it's still on the left picture, big picture. It's the Princess of Peabody and Pigglywiggly. Some, you may see the pig costume and think, smoke pigs, not pigs, which is basically the same thing, but it's a simpler, more interesting way for the kids to understand. And we did a skit, and did it for each Chester, and basically tell them, don't smoke, etc.
My name's Noah Griffin. I'm a senior, and I've been a part of Health Council for six years now. One of the new things we started this year was the grabbing grab practice, and we partnered with the school nutrition program. And we would have a cart out in the lobby, and that way students could just come by and grab a carton milk or juice and a biscuit just to go, because a lot of students don't know it's free anymore. So that made it very easy for them if they were running late or something, and they could eat in class or eat on the way. And then we did a pancakes with professionals one morning, which we got pancakes from McDonald's, had some fruits, and we had professionals come in from all around the state, really. We had EMT, firefighters, police officers, and some linemen that were there. Just, and we let some kids in, and the kids could eat with professionals and talk to them about their profession of the day if they were interested in going into that profession. And then also this year, we did a text, Let's Live More, which is a campaign to not just keep, get people away from distracted driving, but also just to put down the phone every now and then and be more involved. Either board game, go outside, play with your dog, anything like that.
Some of the outreaches we did was the Christmas parade, and we wasn't gonna do it in the beginning, but one of the members was like, hey, let's do the Christmas parade. We was like, okay, that's fine. So we ended up doing it.
That's really how it went, too.
I ended up liking it so much that me and Tyler are gonna be, um, taking care of the theme and how we're gonna decorate it and everything. And then all of the members of Student Health Council were involved in picking out the equipment that was gonna be picked out, put out there based on who was gonna like it, what would trap people want to actually use it. And sharing the messages is basically us here telling y'all what we do, helping our community in our schools, and basically helping other peoples learn, other people learn what's right and wrong. And I'm also here learning because I'm not really good at presentations. I'm scared that we have learned how to do it.
Learning and leading.
That's right.
Another new thing we started this year was the 12 Days of Giving, which was in December, and we put together goodie bags for some of the hard workers of Chester County that don't get recognized nearly as much as they should. And we all took turns delivering them around town to the Braithwaite Grove, the Dog Pound, and a lot of the school staff. We also started our kindness rocks this year, which we just took small rocks we could like fit in your hand, and we would paint kind messages on them, and then we went around town and placed them in the parks and downtown. That way we could pick them up and read them and then set them down somewhere else, and you could really see the effect.
Okay, so this would've been Presley, so I'll make it in here. So all the things they've told you about so far have been student-led, and it's been for schools, for community, for other students. But we do take some time to allow them to spend time with just each other. This council is put together, we don't pick the students, we don't just go through and handpick. I try to tell them, and this is a note from me, I try to tell them, and Ms. Amy and I both, you're all a leader. You don't have to be the captain of the football team. You don't have to be the most popular kid in school. You don't have to be the lead in the play. Somebody's watching you. Somebody is learning from you, and you just may not know it. You're leading yourself. You may have a little brother, a little sister that's paying attention to what's going on. So they're making an impression, they just don't know it. And so when they come to Health Council, some of them don't even know each other, and it's really cool for us to give them the nights like the Halloween party is one of my favorite. It's just them. We do Christmas parties. They did a ropes course that was fun, but I did not climb that pole. Then it was actually Presley climbed all the way to the top and rang the bell. We've taken a couple of field trips. Ms. Ellen Brown helped us do a paint party last year, and we accidentally had fun. Like, it was supposed to be a fundraiser, but it was really fun. I think they're gonna try to do that again next year.
My name's Todd Crowe. I'm a senior, and I've been in Student Health Council for two years. We are located at Eagle's Edge, where we usually meet about one, at least once a month, before school or after school, sometimes on the weekends. We thank the Board at Eagle's Edge where we can come up with ideas to help the community. A ton of events we have is, we just did interviews for new student Health Council members. We are working on a garden shed right behind Eagle's Edge, and we are about to send a few members to TTI.
So this was a word that, we all did a team building. Somehow or another, it came up, and it's a word that's not a word, and it seemed to fit really well. We were gonna have t-shirts made, and then that just kinda fell through. Usually if they give me a job, I forget it, but if I give them a job, they follow through. So good group of kids. But it was, the idea behind, it has a, we put a definition there, but the idea behind it is, you do for the good of others. You don't do for yourself. I am because we are. There is nothing that this Health Council could do, and Ms. Amy and I could not do any of this without these kids. These kids could not do it without us, and our community could not excel without them. So it's because of everybody coming together that anything is achieved. And so that was just a really cool, really cool word, and I gave them a whole little story about it that I would make a story through that. We finally created a Facebook page.
And Twitter.
And a Twitter. Thank you, Mr. Kilzer, for making me create a Twitter, which I know nothing about. And we just happen to have some great council members who will be going to California, who are on the team that will be going to California, so we hope to put them in charge of building a webpage. Sounds like a really good student-led initiative for them to take on. So I'm gonna open it. If y'all have any questions you would like to ask them, I can tell these three are itching to answer questions. It's okay. It's okay.
So affected today, you've become seniors, correct? Because I've heard you announce. Making sure I got the...very good. Top of the pecking order, right?
Nothing like a senior waiting to the last presentation of the year to decide they want to be. That is a requirement. They all have to do one presentation. That's pretty much the only requirement. They have to do a presentation to learn a little bit about leadership and about different community organizations.
I think you did a fine job.
Thank y'all very much. Thanks, Heather. If it's intended, I'd be impressed.
I need to speak to Presley. I need to be drawn.
The next thing on our agenda is gonna be a drawing, uh, pictures that participate in a survey.
Yes, sir. If I could, before we get into that, because I do notice Coach Coleran in the back, I know we included some other recognitions of different student groups who've excelled recently in contests, competitions. I know that our baseball team competed in the sectional, came up a little short, but we're very proud of their accomplishments. Also, you know, it was included in the board packets, and we do plan, and Heather actually mentioned it, about those students who qualify to go to California this coming summer to visit through the co-competitions that they had in Jackson. The recognition that our students and staff are receiving through the code is very commending, and I know that especially the families that were related with them being able to qualify for that trip. It's exciting to know that our guys and girls in these classes that are investing in their time, in-class time to learn these skills, but are also getting recognition beyond the classroom and getting rewarded for their accomplishments. So I look forward to that. And we plan to have them come and share their learning when they get back from their California trip. So congratulations.
Evan Allen is running the state.
Is anybody burping?
He finished 10th.
He got 10th in the 1600 meter at 432 and some little point something, so...
He got 10th in the 1600 meter at 432 and some little point something, so, uh, when I.
3200 is not yet, or is it still?
No, 3200 should be probably about right now.
Wow. Very, very good. Very good. You've seen Evan run. It's, it's unreal to think that there's nine people faster than him in that race. Okay. So we'll go ahead and do the drawing. Yes, it's going to be 10 drawings for the, uh, participation. Again, uh, for everybody here so you hear it, uh, the participation rate for this educator perception survey, the incentive to, uh, all the schools were to get your staff and it's not something that you can do in five minutes. It takes some time for the educators to participate. But in that participation, you have to maintain or at least reach a level of 45% before the school itself or the school district can get results back. These results are very instrumental for any type of school planning, any type of focus direction to improve in areas such as instructional school climate and related topics. Teachers and staff and leaders will be using those results as they begin to build on their improvement plans for the upcoming year. But for us, with this incentive, every school were able to complete the, the bar being higher at 75%. In fact, we had some schools that surpassed the even 75%. Most of them got into the 90 range where then overall we had a 90% completion rate, which is the highest we've ever had and it's one of the highs not only in the southwest core area, but also highest in the state. So it was very, very beneficial to see those numbers being so high because the results of that can be truly reflective of what the staff's, uh, decisions are, their opinions regarding, uh, several questions. And, uh, I know for one with Kim and Renee yesterday, we talked about it briefly, about their review of that work and how it will impact their own planning for their school improvement plan. So without further ado, let me get to my list. Okay, so, uh, the total number of staff that participated was 223. So between the range of, and I know it's going to be hard to see, I'm going to blow that up so you can all be mindful of. Okay, can everybody see the large number? Now that was what was the default number, so nine is not the first winner, so I'm fixing to push it. So we're going to do this 10 times and, uh, Sarah, you're going to record the numbers? Okay, very good. So trying to make sure we keep this. All right, so each of these 10, or 10 chamber bucks packages, $50 each, okay? First one is four, which would be Michael Bolton from the high school. Number two, second one, would be number 92. 92 is Berlin West.
Pedicure.
Okay, we're back down to, back down to ours right away. Number three is number 83, which is Tanya Harwell from Chester County Junior High. So we've got two winners from the junior high. Number four, 196. 196 is Deborah Haynes from Jack's Creek. This is number five. 141, which is Crystal Wilson from the middle school. That's number five, correct? Number six. Number 17, Jessica Emerson, Chester County High. You're going to take it for her on her behalf. You don't have to be present to win, so I didn't say that. And if you won the pass, you can still win again, so. Uh, that was number six, correct? Number seven. Number 62, uh, Starla T., winner. Chester County High. Number seven. This is seven. That was seven, okay. Number eight is 114. And that's, uh, Summer Willis. From the junior high. So that was number eight, correct? We've got two more. Okay, number nine, number 165. Leslie Hunt, Eastchester. And the last one. 221. Janice Whitman, Westchester. Congratulations to all who won. You can get them, or you can come by the office and pick those up. Mr. Thomas has those.
He's got Texas in one, uh, best large ensemble.
Okay, you might want to say that again, Rick.
Number one in, in large ensemble for those who said, oh, it's right at the end of the block.
How many nominations do we have? Does anybody? So we, now is that at the end of it, or is that just one of possible more?
We haven't gotten, we did not get the best execution or choreography, but we did get best large ensemble, so I'm still waiting text messages.
Okay. So we're still waiting? Okay, so there's still some more. Very good. Well, all of those who participated that know how significant that was for our community. So, good deal. Okay, that's it. Again, uh, Thomas has got these in our office and either we, you can pick them up with us or you can, uh, we'll mail them to you.
Thank you, everybody participated in that. Appreciate all of our teams. Uh, next thing is going to be, uh, we have a change. It's going to be recommendation for Kenya from this Hayden Cloud. I know Ms. Cloud has met all of the requirements and Super Kenya is recommending her for junior. A motion to second approval in the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those know that it is approved. Congratulations. And next, uh, things six and seven, uh, is approved by a first draft of the 2018-19 general purpose.
It's 1920, but that was, that was a mistake on our part. That should be reading 1920 instead of 1819. That's my fault.
Okay, general purpose, federal budget, and also, uh, the next thing we're going to do is requesting approval for salary compensation, which is at the, uh, question.
Okay, sir, it's at the, at the very end of your budget, the three areas that are mentioned in your fourth packet with the salary steps, uh, schedule, the, uh, how we transition from a stepping level to our current soar plan. And then the third thing is, um, certified administrators without schedules. Well, that was actually four. The certified administrators have a set stepping level that they have to go by since they don't have LOEs determined. But the fourth thing is the supplemental positions. Uh, it is a newer schedule because the entry level teacher salary moves from $35,200 to $36,000.
The VEP, there says request 17741. I thought we'll get less this year based on the average daily attendance.
Well, we, we do have less on the VEP because of our average daily membership, but now the dollar amount is richer from the state. They did increase a little bit of percentage, but now based, we had less than what we did the year before because of the 179 were funded for the current year, where now we're being funded for 177.
I make a motion to approve. We have a motion to second approve, uh, the budget and first draft of our budget for 2018 to 2020. And also that's going to be the board approving the salary compensation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next thing we get, uh, right now is requesting approval for two new staff positions. So I'm going to let you pull them out.
Okay, so the two positions that I'm asking the board to consider, and you've got job descriptions for each. The first one is the school safety supervisor. And then the second one is the instructional technology and testing coordinator.
Perhaps the safety is part-time?
Yes, sir. Well, it's because that for the work, there's going to be additional jobs to be done in the summer, such as writing the grants, filling out the applications. Because we expect that with the current legislation where they're giving us opportunities to fill out new applications for additional SROs, that's going to be now after the, we don't know all the details yet, but again, for our school district and as made mention by our sheriff, to me recently, that there is an appeal to us to complete that documentation so we can get a third SRO because the state will provide 75% of that funding and we have to magically 25. So just like Coach E's did this past year, filling out those additional applications so that we can qualify for the additional resources through drug and safety school. We were able to double the contribution that the state yearly gives us, which is still not yet up to the level that can afford even one SRO. But we also have an additional $88,000 that are being applied, one-time, uh, fees that are being applied to capital project improvements to provide better safety. Safety at every school.
I make a motion to approve both the positions.
I have a motion to second approve both these positions in the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
They'll be public, or published tomorrow. Yes. And they'll be published on the job opening site on our own employment tab of our school website.
Next thing, uh, just going to be, uh, request for cell phone policy, uh, changed. I think, uh, Coach Murray was behind this. I would. Still are.
He still is.
Give some change.
Again, Coach, they, they've got all the stuff that what you provided me, so you've got the, the information you gave me they have, so you can just speak kind of general.
I just think is, uh, is the initial cell phone policy was created several years ago. There've been a lot of updates and a lot of, uh.
Not many pages anymore, are there?
The cell phone. There's not many of our kids that don't have a cell phone. And the, and the current policy led to a lot of upset parents because they would get cell phones taken up, just being powered on, or they weren't really doing anything that was disruptive to the school day, but they were still breaking the policy. So, uh, I looked at several other schools, kind of combined some stuff, uh, met with our, uh, the parker chairs at the high school, uh, running by them. They made some recommendations, made some changes. I met with the student council, uh, running by them, they made some changes. I did contact, uh, running by Mr. McPee at the junior high because it would affect them as well. They were on board with it. So basically, uh, the policy, and you guys have, I'm going to read, read, go over the whole policy for you, but basically is if the cell phone becomes a disruption to the school day or the class setting, then it'll be confiscated. If it's not a disruption, uh, then we're, then, then it's not going to be something where we're trying to take, take the phones. And also, uh, there's three areas that can be confiscated, disruption in the class, and I mean, if they're doing something that causes disruption in the class, teacher takes it up, gets it to the office, those units get that phone back that same day. We contact the parent, let them know, hey, the phone got taken up. If it happens again, you guys will have to come pick it up. Because the biggest gripe that we got from the parents is keeping those phones overnight, especially over the weekend, if it happened on Friday or Thursday. Uh, so that will alleviate a lot of that. And then disruption to the school, and it's defined as anything administration has to investigate. If it's a disruption to school, that requires a longer confiscation. And then the third is if a student is using that to bully, intimidate, or threaten somebody, then that even amps up the, uh, the confiscation time. So, uh, I, at the high school, we felt like there needed to be an updated policy to better, uh, correspond to the, everybody has a cell phone now, but this is why I say everybody. Most everybody does. And I think this policy will lend better to kids going, going by what the policy says and parents. The gripe that we hear from parents, I think it'll alleviate a lot of that, that too as well. So, do you guys have any questions after reading over?
I'd like to say you did a great job.
It will be updating the student handbook, yeah, Coach, our, uh, and there will be, just like included in, um, a portion of the policy, 6.312, the lines, the last lines of the existing policy, which was last updated in August 28th, 2014. We will have to adjust lines nine through 11 and instead it will read, um, to, uh, instead, if I make a recommendation that that nine, lines nine through 11 read unauthorized use or improper storage of a device will result, that's the same, but it will result in disciplinary action addressed in the current student handbook. So there is some generality to it, so as things change, it won't automatically force the policy to change every time.
Make a motion to accept the change.
Sir. We have a motion to second accept the change of the policy in the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those know that it is approved. Thank you, Coach. Next thing, we're going to be approving the vision for our five-year approval plan for 2018 through 2023, where it's actually sitting at. And this was something we worked on in our training, for the SBA, and, uh, we did make some updates.
Make a motion to approve.
Sir. We have a motion to second approve the updates of the five-year plan in the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those know that it is approved. Uh, the next thing we're going to look is for the rental fees on our school facilities. And I talked to Cory, we talked a little bit today, and Cory said basically, he was kind of going by what we've done before, and, uh, y'all got a chance to look over those? Anybody got any comments, we think we need to change something?
But we, we have to have someone there the whole time that, that's awful cheap since we've got to pay somebody to be there.
Well, no, that pays in addition to. This is just for the actual renting of the facility itself. Yeah, no, there is a, right now, I believe the rate's $15 an hour for somebody to be there.
But I've been there, there's no one there. They just let them in and they left.
Well, that's wrong. Actually, that's another thing that we need to make sure. Well, again, the, the protocol has been that when, and it's primarily the middle school that gets rented, the high school that gets rented. And, um, in those cases, all administration, the people who rent sign off and they understand every expense is going to be accrued to it. And also people are then, if that's the case, people are getting paid for things that they're not doing.
And that is a way, like Tori last year, we got practice. The rental fees, uh, isn't per day?
Um, well, yes, on the first answer would be yes, but now some cases it's been if you set up, you know, sometimes they've asked if there's nothing competing with it and they wanted to have it not prior to to set up, then we had charged them twice for it.
That's just a panel case by case basis. What about the insurance for the event?
Well, we're covered with Tennessee Risk Management Trust because of the facilities.
The school is responsible for the insurance?
Uh, if an outside of income, uh, to a facility, they're supposed to give their own insurance and add the school system, that's additional insurance. and add the school system, that's additional insurance. If it make bigger outside of it, not somebody doesn't have.
And we've still got a lot more work to do with the auditorium as far as the structure it is and how we're going to set those rates. Move to approve.
We have motion to second to approve the rate we have in front of us in the other discussion.
This does leave it open to adjust the auditorium rate this year though, right?
Correct.
All the favors say aye? Those know that is approved. Okay, next is approval consolidation application by I D E A, E S, E A. And Cory has said basically that this is something the state says we have to approve.
It has to be included in the board minutes that we are accepting the federal dollars.
Thank you, motion to accept.
All the favors to second, if you accept the federal dollars, in the other discussion, all the favors say aye? All that thing is approved. And Cory, you really have left a couple of updates, and Cory, you want to update us on the baseball?
Okay, well, I've got Britt here also, so Britt, why don't you speak to the current status for the baseball and softball facility?
We'll have, next Friday will be a pre-meeting to talk here at the board and interested. Then we'll have to be there for the meeting, I will go with specs. Then June 14, we will open those bids, get started June 17.
And this is going to be, you might want to say, the dimensions of this new proposal is a little bit bigger than what was initially?
When we, on meeting with Mike Nixler, it's actually going to be a possibility to show to a 60-foot because of the trusses that are, that's more standard size, you don't have to open a special order. So 60 by 70, stretch 75. We'll handle some of the other, the specs with Mike Nixler, we got it done. I think we're going to have, get a real good structure off front, and we'll have some plumbing I think we're not going to do right off, but HDC we're going to handle ourselves. With our purchase, get it installed, we do a lot of choosing, I think we're going to, not that we're going to really cost, do some cost savings. We're not going to have to have an architect.
No, sir. We already, we already. We already paid.
I wanted to ask about the outdoor closet.
Well, I went by today, and some of you might have seen the chairs, the seating sitting outside. Again, those will be carried off to the sanitation, to sanitation center. So if you want to help assist us carry those things off, you're more than welcome to load up as many chairs as you want to. Head that way. Anywhere you want to go with it. But there is a sanitation place that you can load them up for. There's, all the chairs have been removed, all the seating has been removed currently right now. The carpet has been removed that's in the aisles in the back and sides. The ceilings are being painted at this time, flat black to make it more theater setting. They're working toward the front, toward the stage right now, doing that. After that event happens with the painting of the ceiling, then they will come back and take care of the inconsistency with the flooring right now between the tiles that are there and then the floor that's now slabbed from where they removed the carpet and the pad. There's a little bit of offset there, so they're going to bring those back to where they're equal. And then Joe Pataglia, who was the award winner for the flooring, is going to come in with a more current, modern-looking colored tile. It's a kind of a grayish-blue hue, it's going to go really well with the walls, the ceiling, and the curtain. And then our, to follow that up, our ceiling, or excuse me, our chairs are going to be installed by August. And of course, we had a copy of one for you guys to view, but the red backing is going to be replaced with something a little bit darker and blue. So it's going to really hopefully complement the curtain in front. And then we're also, Coach E's is going to be dealing with the sound, the lighting, and.
Hopefully the bathroom.
Bathroom, right, replacing the fixtures.
I said large, so I'm going to get some recommendations to see what we can do because it's an open facility, adding to the floor.
But it is a, again, and Britt said this also recently, but again, nowadays, schools don't build these auditoriums like this. Coggerable High School, who just recently built a million or $100 million building, their auditorium seats about the same as ours. It's about 1,000 seats. It looks no better than ours. So the opportunities to really do some very creative, innovative, and entertaining things with that facility is going to be, I'll just say, sky's the limit, right, Sharon? So we look forward to, and again, we're planning on bringing more opportunities for our community to enjoy more fine arts and other events, but is not removing the chance and the opportunities for our own local folks to be able to utilize that resource, just as you have in the past.
Would there be a problem giving the chairs away?
There's, well, I say, you can carry the chairs on the way to sanitation. I didn't tell you what year you had to carry.
I thought somebody wanted the chairs. Would there be a problem that the school system given them?
Well, again, the statement is. You've got to take them home. Well, they come in four sections, I don't know, four seats per section. It's metal frame, I can't, you know, when they.
The next thing that I just need to announce is on June the 25th will be our next board meeting here at the board office.